I'd like to call the order, the June meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. Would you please join me as the Oak Ridge Wildcat Company Navy Junior ROTC will present the colors and then I will lead you in the pledge to the flag. Please rise.
Color dark. Hope. Left. Ace. Kelly. Be that. Kelly.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Airy. Kelly. Kelly. Fall up.
Thank you, and you may be seated. This is our kind of end of the year, school-related meeting. There'll be a lot of items on the agenda tonight that are purchase-type items, policies that are being updated as a result of recent legislation passed in the last legislative meetings. So you'll see a lot of things on here on the agenda like that. So the first item is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion made?
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. The agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we'll move into special reports and presentations. That will include still good things, finishing up our school year and continuing on into the summer in schools across our district. So Dr. Hartman, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I'm pleased to report from Robertsville Middle. Jaylee Givens and Mia Hadley from Robertsville Middle School have been recognized as 2023 Promising Young Writers by the National Council of Teachers of English, NCTE. Jaylee Givens is one of only two students in Tennessee to receive the highest designation of first class. Mia Hadley received the superior designation. This year's schools nominated 146 eighth graders to participate in the Promising Young Writers Program. Of those, 38% were selected to receive the top designation of first class and 40% received the superior designation. Julie Kinder-McMillan is the contest sponsor at Robertsville.
Ms. Webb.
Okay, at Jefferson Middle School, students enrolled in the Geography and Geospatial Technologies class entered the 2023 Story Map Competition for Tennessee Students. The following JMS students earned spots in the top five: Climate Change in Oak Ridge, Tennessee, created by Vincent Kwanga, and Isaiah Cooper, sorry if I mispronounced that; Endangered Species in Tennessee, created by John White and Hunter Koch; What Happened to Native Americans in Tennessee and Why, created by Bodie Spearbeck and Tyram Skidmore; and first place went to Alexander Hope Jansen and Jack Satterfield for their map indicating how COVID-19 impacted the school systems of Tennessee. So that's from Jefferson.
Ms. McLean.
Okay, I have a bunch of good news. From Linden Elementary, the track team took first place in the Oak Ridge Schools Elementary Track Meet. This was a dedicated group of third and fourth grade students who took practice and running very seriously. Their hard work definitely paid off, allowing the championship trophy to remain on display at Linden. A big thank you to Coach Sawyer and the ORHS Track Team for their help in making this event possible for our elementary students. Brady Saltzman, a fourth grade student in Ms. Lisa Buckner's classroom at Linden, recently participated in the National Geography B in Washington, D.C. Brady had qualified for the National B after attending the Regional Geography B competition in Franklin, Tennessee in February. Brady enjoyed his time in Washington, competing against other regional finalists from across the country. He's already looking forward to future competitions. Also at Linden, there were four students who were chosen to represent Linden with their artistic talents here at the School Administration Building. Miles Monteth, Maddox Lee, Pierce Johnson, and Hannah Camacho had their artwork professionally framed and added to the Oak Ridge Schools' collection. A big thank you to Ms. Tristi Berryhill for always supporting our Linden students and promoting their artwork through our community. Okay, now going on to good news at Willowbrook. Summer Learning Camp is in full swing at Woodland. Sixty-six students are currently working on ELA, math, and STEM education through June 30th. Thank you to Woodland for hosting and all the teachers who are working to support our students. Willowbrook hosted the Oak Ridge Civic Music Association with Director Martha Damiano. Eighteen students attended this amazing camp and parents were able to come, listen, and have lunch with their campers on the last day. Thanks to Orkma for this awesome work and support of the fine arts in Oak Ridge and the Willowbrook community.
My good news comes from Oak Ridge High School. Members of the Oak Ridge High School Track Team competed in the T double S double A State Championship Meet. Out of those athletes that competed, Oak Ridge High School senior Seven Pettis made the medal stand in the 100-meter dash. She ran a personal best of 12.17 and nearly missed a school record. The industry certification report has been completed for this year's students. It's a very impressive list, and we want to recognize our teachers and students for the dedicated effort it takes to have this kind of certification success. There were 840 certificates earned by the current roster FY23 of students, and that's good news in the Oak Ridge Schools. Next on the agenda is our public forum. The public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in and then state your name and address for the board. I know there is a person here, so Ms. Rose Weaver, if you want to just come on up with the young ladies that you're gonna tell us something about. Ladies, come on with her.
And I would like these young ladies to have members of their family to stand.
Wait, wait, wait. Yes, pull that thing.
I would like for any of the Jones family members to stand at this time. Are you Faith or are you Deanna? Okay. These two young ladies, Faith and Deanna Harper, are our recipients from the 2023 Black History Contest that was held for any student that wanted to participate from middle to high school. And we even extended it to March, even though Black History is generally recognized in February. Well, history is recognized throughout the year because we kept on increasing the ante. We started out with 100, then it went to 200, then it went to $350. So each of these young ladies will be receiving an amount of $350. Deanna Harper, okay, let me go to Faith then. Faith Harper submitted a contest that was entitled "The Road to Graduation" that acknowledged the contributions that the Scarborough 85 students had made, and it provided challenging questions. I told her it needs to be copyrighted, but I would have to be her supporter if any funds were raised from that. But we want to thank her for putting this contest together, and hopefully it'll be something that can be distributed throughout the Oak Ridge School system as a game. And today, as part of the $350, we are giving her a check for $100. The remaining part of the stifling or the award will be presented to her at the 2023 NAACP Back to School Event because we think it will serve as an incentive for other students to participate next year. But congratulations, and that's for you. Now, that's not for your dad.
[laughter]
Okay. Okay, the second contest winner is Deanna Harper, and she was able to write a play. It's called "The Scarborough 85 Play: From Darkness to Hope." And we're hoping that this play can be presented in the future to the Oak Ridge and East Tennessee community. She will receive the remaining stifling of 100, and the other stifling will be presented at the 2023 NAACP Back to School. But congratulations, congratulations, young ladies. And they're sisters. These are sisters.
Thank you, ladies. Congratulations again. Keep up the good work. And what grade are y'all in school?
Oh, we're going to seventh.
Pardon?
You can come upstairs and introduce yourself.
Seventh?
Yes.
If you put that money in the bank, it will earn interest. And when you get out as a senior, you can loan me some of that if you would. But congratulations. Thank you all for being here. Thank your family also as well for being here. We appreciate it. Rose, thank you again for bringing them to us. Thank you. Any Tennessee baseball fans in the audience? Tennessee beat Stanford today, six to four. The final is just in. Anyone else? Moving on, next is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Please cast your vote. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Now we move into items for action. The first one is an FY23 Budget Transfer Number Three and Budget Amendment Number Two. This is a second reading on those. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
Yes, we talked last meeting. This was to establish a budget for the Oak Ridge Education Foundation Grants, budget for the security film, maintenance transfers for a purchase of a tri-deck mower, budget for summer learning camp and summer learning camp transportation, budget for summer learning camp grant, and some food service dollars. So a big transfer.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item B, FY23 Budget Transfer Number Four and Budget Amendment Number Three. This is a first and second reading. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers?
And as you can see from the back up there, we're gonna see this item, about three items for the purchase of a van for special education. So that's the reason that this is on for first and second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Items, I apologize. I probably say this every year. This next item is FY24 Blanket Purchase Order for Home Depot. My first year on the board, I raised the question, why are we buying so many blankets? Showed you, I've come a long way, I think, since then. I now at least understand what this is for. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of a blanket purchase order in the amount of $50,000 for incidental purchases at Home Depot for FY24, and perhaps we need to change that language next year.
No, it's kind of, it can always serve as a little test for newborn members. Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. Webb. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Item D, FY24 Annual Copy Paper Bid and Purchase. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of FY24 Annual Copy Paper Bid and Purchase.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers?
As you can see from the memo there, American Paper and Twine hold the statewide contract for the state of Tennessee, and their prices are less than the companies that responded to the published Oak Ridge Schools RFP. So their cost was the lowest.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item E is the purchase of special education van for work-based learning. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of a special education van for work-based learning from Secret City Dodge in the amount of $44,098.73.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
As we talked at our last meeting, we had trouble just getting people to bid on vehicles. So the same thing here with this van. We didn't receive any bids, so we went through the three quotes process, and Secret City Dodge had the lowest bid.
For those listening or watching, you might just explain briefly what work-based learning is, so people would know why this van is being used or needed.
Yeah, and Mr. Stoltz could have helped us a lot here. But no, it's how we can transfer our students out to local partners that are taking some of our students, accepting some of our students to work in various fields out in our community. It's a great program and has increased greatly with Mr. Stoltz's presence here in the district. So this van will help transport those students.
Questions or comments? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the purchase of annual custodial supplies from Ellison Supply. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of annual custodial supplies from Ellison Supply.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers?
As mentioned earlier, each year, the Maintenance Operations Department solicits quotes for the annual purchase of custodial supplies, ranging from paper towels, toilet paper, can liners, hand soap, gloves, et cetera. Ellison Supplies has consistently provided the district with lower prices for these items compared with other vendors.
Comments or questions from the board? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G is approval of Cope Architecture Contract. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Cope Architecture Contract for updating facility and enrollment recommendations in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers?
And as the board knows, our work with the Enrollment Facilities Committee, a couple years ago, we had a document created by Cope that kind of spelled out where our housing developments were, projections of students coming from those housing developments. And now with, two years later, we have to update that. So we're gonna ask them to update that document with new numbers, new projections, and we'll play into what we recommend going forward based on those recommendations, based on the number of students we get. So Peter Ludman will be working with us again on that type of work.
Comments or questions? You might, we were talking about this a little bit before the meeting started, kind of update a little bit, if you would, where we are with that committee and what it looks like going forward. I know there'll be some pause perhaps until we get a new city manager in place.
Yeah, and we have gained, though, a couple of city employees to that committee, so that's a good thing. Allen's been meeting with Corbett and our Cope, Peter Ludman person, looking at sites, looking at land, giving pros and cons for pieces of land and thinking up, we're thinking up of options of, you know, what building, where would we add on, if we could add on. So going from just an addition all the way to a new building and everything in between. So that committee is continuing to meet, and really now, we're kind of waiting on, okay, what's the enrollment gonna do? That's really gonna drive some of the next steps in regards to what our options are going forward.
And we talked also earlier that there would be a time when the board and council would get back together to...
Yeah, we're hoping that that would happen in August. So I think once we get the new city manager picked over there, that that might be a good time to sit down, review everything up-to-date, get him or her up-to-date, and then schedule that meeting.
All right. Any other questions or comments? The motion is for approval of the Cope Architectural Contract. Please cast your vote. Okay, moving on. Item H is the FY24 Board of Education Annual Agenda. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY24 Board of Education Annual Agenda.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb.
And this document just lays out the dates that we're meeting and highlights items that could be considered for the board by month. And obviously, we can add more items or take some items off, but gives the board an idea of what happens each month on a yearly basis.
Mr. Lay, could you come around and plug this in? We have a technical difficulty here.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Motion passes unanimously. Now, hang just a second here to give Ms. Agel a chance to We're just about there. We'll go ahead with the next item. Item I, FY23 Preschool Head Start Self-Assessment. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of FY23 Preschool Head Start Self-Assessment.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
As the board knows, the self-assessment is a head start requirement in which a team of preschool staff, parents, and community partners closely evaluate each service area for the program. Within each service area, strengths and areas to be strengthened are identified. The team then identifies areas of which to focus on as priority items. These are the areas in which funding will be an area of focus. And it's a tremendous amount of work, and we appreciate Ms. Downard's leadership.
Absolutely. Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Following up with that is the FY23 Anderson County Head Start Contract. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Anderson County Head Start Contract.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
And you can see the contract that's attached there. And speaking of leadership, I want to thank Mr. Lay, Ms. Downard. This used to be a much bigger deal to get this contract, and now it's very, very easy and quiet, and there's just a great partnership there.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the Willowbrook Elementary School Track Club. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Willowbrook Elementary School Track Club.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second?
Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
Well, this is a wonderful club, and with the addition of a new track in our latest budget, I believe this is an attempt by Ms. Lorendean to knock off Ms. Jenkins and Linden's track title we talked about earlier today.
Comments or questions from the board? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Item J, FY23, excuse me, item K, excuse me again, item L, naming of the access road at Blankenship Field for Coach Emory Hale. If you'll remember, at our last meeting, we had a group here that brought to the board, and to the superintendent, a recommendation to do this, and so now, we're going to hear a recommendation from the superintendent.
And Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of naming the access road from Kentucky Avenue to Blankenship Field Locker Room as Coach Emory Hale Way.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchus.
As you said, keys, the Don Bell and others were here last meeting and made this recommendation, and you can see from the attachment, there's some information about Coach Hale there, and I think it's very deserving to have that be named after him.
Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. There'll be a lot of people excited about this next item, one being myself, along with others, I would say, sitting up here with me. And that is item M, the paving of the RMS Cafeteria Road Rams Way. Dr. Borchus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the paving of RMS Cafeteria Road called Rams Way by Rogers Group Incorporated in the amount of $60,787.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchus.
Yeah, I don't know what else to say, but yes, this is a long time coming, and I can't wait to see it happen. You can see in the quotes there that Rogers Group was the best bidder, and just looking forward to seeing that. And I think Alan said this morning, we have the signs already, so we'll have the street signs named Rams Way ready to go after that road gets paved.
Perfect. Comments or questions from the board? Ms. Agel.
Does this set a precedent that every time paving or repair is needed, it will be on us instead of the city, as this actually was a city street?
You want to take that one?
Yeah, it could set a precedent, I suppose. We did go back and forth with the engineers and city manager on this particular road, and it was deemed it was now our property, so hopefully in the future, we don't have too many situations where we have a, what was a city road going through our campus, but in this particular case, it was decided it was our road.
Yes. And just to follow up, we did some research on that, and even though all city property that has school facility, or all school facilities, the property is on city property in reality. This road that is now Rams Way never had a name. It had, it was a no-name road. So, the argument or debate, it wasn't an argument, the debate back and forth, well, who is responsible? Well, and I think we, as occasion has called on it to happen before on other items, we said if we're ever going to get this road paved, the only way we're going to get it paved is for us to do it. I hope it doesn't set a precedent for that. Okay, enough said. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item N is increased contract days for coordinated school health coordinator. Dr. Borchus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval for increased contract days for the coordinated school health coordinator.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchus.
And as you can see from the memo, memo there, what this does is it allows the Ms. Marshall Way to manage additional duties related to the administration of the Food Service Program in collab, in collaboration with the Food Service Management Company, Southwest Food Service Excellence, SFE.
Comments or questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, we're going to, our next items, we're going to be dealing with some board policies, as I mentioned earlier, that will be first and second readings, some minor changes to these policies, which the superintendent will allude to when we get to them. The first one is Board Policy 4.204 Summer School, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 4.204 Summer School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchus.
For this policy and the next policies, I'm going to use the TSBA summary as a high-level summary, won't go through line by line, but if there's other questions, we certainly can answer those. State Board of Education Policy 3.3 Promotion and Retention was updated during the State Board of Education's May meeting. This policy change requires local boards of education to include additional information on make-up days for summer programs in their policies. We've updated Policy 4.204 to align with these new requirements.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is Board Policy 4.403 Library Materials, also a first and second reading. Dr. Borchus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 4.403 Library Materials.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchus.
A new state law, Public Chapter 472, changes the process for school districts to respond to challenged library materials. Previously, state law required that all complaints proceed to the Board of Education. This new law includes flexibility for districts by permitting the board to create a process with several tiers of review.
Comments or questions? And we have those tiers in place in case this were to be an issue, correct?
Correct.
And again, I would, I would say, and as we mentioned, in what we're hearing now, this is not the board coming forward and creating these ideas for changes. These are laws that have been enacted that we really don't have a choice one way or the other. We have to abide by what the legislature says, even though at times, we may not agree with it. So, Ms. Agel.
So, what is the final authority on the reconsideration?
After going through the series of tiers, which include the committee and the principal, it does have the superintendent and designate the audience at this level of appeals in the process.
Other questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is Board Policy 5.106 Application and Employment, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 5.106 Application and Employment.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchus.
School districts are prohibited from hiring individuals on Tennessee's Department of Children's Service list of perpetrators of child abuse and those on the Registry of Abuse of Vulnerable Persons maintained by the Department of Health. A change to state law, Public Chapter 222, clarifies that districts may not hire individuals who appear on similar lists maintained by other states. We've updated our policy to align with this change. And as we talked at executive, this pretty, pretty much makes sense that we would make this happen.
Comments or questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next is Board Policy 5.119 Employment of Retirees, also a first and second reading. Dr. Borchus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 5.119 Employment of Retirees.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchus.
Due to ongoing teacher shortages, the General Assembly passed Public Charter 425, which allows more flexibility in hiring retirees. This change allows retirees to work as substitutes beyond the typical 120-day contract and permits retirees to serve as regular classroom teachers on an ongoing basis.
Comments or questions? I have a question. It's been a little while since I've read this. So, if a retiree, does it indicate in there, and I probably can see it, but I don't, does it indicate in there the number of years? Let me back up and rephrase this. What if an employee retires and has been retired for X number of years, and then they decide they want to come back in? Is that the, what the number would be that would go where X is? Is that a specific number? Could they be retired for 20 years and then come back? Could they be retired for 10 years and come back?
That's a good question. Matt, Mr. Bradburn, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, they can be retired X number of years, five, 10, what have you, and they can come back and work as a retired teacher for a substitute.
And they don't have to do any additional work or certification to be able to do that?
They would have to keep their teaching license active.
And in order to keep the teaching license active, they have to...
They would have to continue to input their PDP points into TNCOMPAS, and once they're retired, they would be getting those PDP points on their own, instead of our current teachers get them throughout the year with us.
And, you know, just thinking that after a period of time, there may be some retirees who will say, you know, I miss doing this, and particularly if I can do it for an extended period of time, as opposed to a day here or three days there, it would make a difference. I think this, you know, I criticize legislation often that is passed, this is one that is very positive, I think, and will, will help, I think, to maybe fill some gaps that we have and some searches that go on that maybe won't go on as long to try to find people to fill some of these positions.
I agree. I'm glad they recognize some of the challenges and are trying to work towards doing some things about that.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Matt. Then please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next is Board Policy 5.305 Family Medical Leave, also a first and second reading. Dr. Borchus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 5.305 Family Medical Leave.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchus.
Public Charter 399 gives employees who are required by law to hold a valid license of qualification for employment and who have been employed with the school district for at least 12 consecutive months, they would get six weeks of paid leave that can be used after the birth, stillbirth, or adoption of a newly placed minor child. This leave must be used within 12 months of the qualifying event, and does not have to be used consecutively. Additionally, this leave counts towards federally granted leave under the Family Medical Leave Act. We've added this provision on this new option to our policy.
Comments or questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is Board Policy 5.307 Physical Assault Leave, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 5.307 Physical Assault Leave.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchus.
A new state law, Public Chapter 343, clarifies that teachers will receive their full salary while on leave due to a physical assault. Our policy's been updated to reflect that change.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next is Board Policy 5.600 Staff Rights and Responsibilities, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchus.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 5.600 Staff Rights and Responsibilities.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchus.
Teachers are now required to report students who commit certain offenses on school property that endanger the life, health, or safety of others per Public Chapter 153. As a result, we've updated the statutory list of responsibilities in our policy.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to items for information. First will be enrollment and attendance reports. You want me to do this first? This is a moment we've been waiting for, again, for attendance awards. We're going to start for this ninth attendance period. The best staff attendance for the ninth attendance period goes to Oak Ridge High School. Who's going to come forward and receive this award for Oak Ridge High School? Yeah. We will now be taking the award back from Oak Ridge High School.
Yes, we do not have a representative, perhaps in the future, you have to be present to win.
Hold, hold. Okay. We're accepting on behalf of Oak Ridge High School will be Mr. Dave Klaudny.
Yes, sir.
Let's hear it.
And that would be the second month in a row.
Yes. Now, for the best student attendance for the ninth attendance period, we have a tie, actually, between Glenwood and Woodland. And I don't think there's anyone here, we were going to have a tug of war between the representatives, but they heard that, I think, and they're not here, so they will share this award unless there's a student here from Glenwood or Woodland that we got, I don't think so. So, we will, they will share it until the next grading period starts. period starts, and this will be delivered to Glenwood or Woodland first, and then they'll take it from there. Okay? So, Mr. Lay, back to you.
Yes. If you look at our total enrollment, of course, for the end of the year, we grew approximately 100 students from this time last year to this year, so we were probably expecting a tad more, but basically right in the neighborhood of 100 students is how we've increased in enrollment. If you look at our individuals for schools this past ninth reporting period, I couldn't help but notice Linden and Willowbrook, and I thought, you know, why are they a little bit higher than the other two elementary schools? And there's a really obvious answer. Both schools experienced a stomach virus. So as we look at attendance, you know, we look at it and we try to figure out, and sometimes it's just as simple as one school will get a virus and the other building won't. And as we discussed earlier, it's always amazing to me, the two schools on the west end of town had the stomach virus, but Glenwood and Woodland seemed to escape that. So, anyway.
All right, thank you. Just a curiosity question. Dr. Henderson, you might be able to answer this, or Mr. Lay. Are we seeing, what are we seeing now as far as new, are we still seeing new families moving into Oak Ridge, registering for school already for next school year? Yes? That's a definitive yes. Are they still coming from California?
No.
Colorado.
And it's worth mentioning, we have moved to online enrollment, so Dr. Henderson's office is possibly not hearing from all of the new families, but basically the online enrollment that is being completed and being sent to the schools.
Why don't you allude to that, what we're doing for that, for online?
Okay, we actually use the kindergarten students, our new kindergarten students for the 23, 24 school year. We sort of use them as our, I guess, guinea pig, for the lack of better words, and we started with an online enrollment. The process actually went very well, and basically parents just go online and they registered for kindergarten. We expected, you know, a few bumps in the road, and that really didn't happen. We do have kiosks set up at each school, and we say the word kiosk. We have computers waiting for parents at school. If they do not have online means at home, they can basically contact the schools and show up at the schools and basically complete the online registration. So it went so well for our kindergarten students for next year, we went ahead and opened that up basically for now K through 12. So basically, if someone is moving to town, or we have a student new to Oak Ridge Schools, they can just simply go online, and it will not let you submit that application until it is complete. And once again, there are some tutorials on there that shows you exactly how to do some things, such as uploading birth certificates, medical information, things such as that. But once again, in speaking with the school secretaries, they are pleased with the new process. They feel like it's going well, going to save a lot of time, should be more convenient on our parents as well. But there is still a learning curve, and we're monitoring that on a daily basis, and we will make adjustments as needed.
While you're there, might also mention, we're doing this for bus riders this year. You want to mention that as well?
Yes, sir. And the bus, the transportation announcement can be a little bit complicated, but basically, over time, students sign up to ride the bus who either decided not to ride the bus, or sometime in the process have just decided to stop riding the bus. So it's like at the high school, we probably had double the number of students register to ride the bus when compared to how many were actually riding the bus. So you think about those numbers up front, we basically, Mr. Walton is going to create those schedules and those routes based on who has signed up for the bus, and we just thought this was a good time, number one, to make that a digital online process, but also to remove all previous requests. And we're asking parents that if their child or children will be riding the bus this school year, please go online, register your child for transportation. If your child is not going to ride a bus, let's say the first month of school or even the first two weeks, please wait to register your child, and as long as you do that, basically a week in advance, we're going to be good. Two weeks would be great. But basically, what that should allow us to do with having the online registration for transportation, we should have a better idea, a better number of who will actually be riding our buses. So basically, when first student develops those routes, assigns students to buses, it should reduce the overcrowding, because if you're not aware every year what happens, we design those routes and we assign students to buses based on basically less than accurate information, and we wind up adjusting those schedules at the end of the first week of school, the second week of school, the third week of school, and some of the principals can attest, that's just really an irritation on the part of the schools, because once again, now your child rode a bus this week, now they're going to have a different bus next week, and it's going to be a different time. It really creates a lot of confusion on our parents as well as our administrators. So we're hoping this new process, once again, go online, register, we should have a better idea of who will be requiring transportation services, and our routes should be more accurate, and hopefully, perhaps, we can avoid changing those routes the second week of school, if we're lucky.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Williams, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I will anyway. Tell us a little bit about summer school and how it's going, if you would do that.
Summer school is going very well. You may have heard, we had a visit from the governor last week who wanted to commend our teachers for the great job they're doing and the great instruction that's going on in Oak Ridge Schools, so that was exciting. But summer school is going well. Students are having a great time. We've got lots of literacy instruction going on, some math, and then some really fun STEM activities and opportunities to be around your friends and not have a big gap in the summertime in your regular instruction. So we really want to thank the teachers who've given their time. Oak Ridge, as you know, has a really short summer anyway, and so we have some really dedicated folks who have given some of their very short summer to make sure that our students are successful.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the financial report. For those on the board who were like me, I forgot to bring my old copy of the budget, because you have a new copy now. I don't think you want to keep it, so when you, Ms. Agel remembered to bring hers. I am the only one. No, Ms. Webb and I are the only ones that forgot to bring, and we will get them in soon, won't we? Well, okay. Any comments from you? All right, very good. Any old business or new business? We'll mention, the board will not meet in July. However, we will be meeting twice in August, and our next scheduled board meeting is August the 7th. So for those of you who are going to take some time this summer to rest and recuperate, I know many of you will be doing things in your building. I know Alan's staff will be working hard this summer to not only clean and update the buildings, but on summer projects that we'll be hearing about that are ongoing. Very important time to get a lot done in a very short period of time, so we appreciate that. We hope everyone has a very safe, healthy summer, and we will see you back here, if not before, on August the 7th. We stand adjourned.